This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, I think you're picking us up. Yeah. Oh, it's the mic. All right, apologies to everyone for being late. It is 6:30. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to a quarter. I think we're recording.
This conference will now be recorded.
Be good to go? Great. Thanks for everyone for putting up with us being late. If everyone would just please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play well. I was just thinking the same thing. Thanks, everyone. If, just you can give me a hand with the roll call, please?
Commissioner Nutbrock?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Alcocherry?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Excused.
Commissioner Keeler?
Also excused.
And Commissioner Alternate Jones?
And he is also excused. Although I do expect Commissioner Workman here soon.
All right. Workman?
Oh, sorry. Smith.
Steve.
Smith. You know, that's what happens when I come in late. My apologies, everyone. You know what? I'll, give me about 20 minutes. I'll be, I'll be fully here. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to look at the meeting minutes from, ah, there it is. The meeting minutes from our last meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
All right.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Welcome.
Hi.
I, I, I vamped for you. I, I, I was late too, so it would look like you were just a minute.
I appreciate, yeah.
It's, this is what a team is all about.
That's right.
All right. Checking, checking to see if anyone is here virtually, so that if anyone wanted to make a public comment at this time, but I am not seeing anyone virtually. I'm not seeing anyone in the lobby. Just did we have any written public comments? Not at all. I, I just wish these folks would just take a number. Just the inrush of public comments is just a bit overwhelming. Hopefully, we can deal with it all. And I believe at this time, we have no public hearings. So I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. And we have no public hearings, so we'll roll right into 1.7A, which is the, the thing I was hoping you guys would knock out while I was late. The October periodic complaint. And Ethan, I'll hand it off to you guys. And thank you, guys, for being patient with me tonight.
Great, thank you. Good evening. And I just wanted to start out by introducing Alec Eggerola. He's sitting to the left of me here. Alec is a new employee with WSP. And I've introduced him virtually before, and so he's attended meetings virtually and met you that way. But he's here tonight in person. Alec comes to us from the Boise area, where he most recently worked for TO engineers. And so that was, Alec can explain a little more about this. But he's a planning engineering firm, and so he was working on project entitlements, development applications there for, for their clients. And he also attended the University of Washington in Seattle, their planning program. So he's been with WSP for, for three months now. So you'll see him in the future again occasionally. He's helping me out with the comprehensive plan update process. He's recently helped out with several other things, including the temporary use code and the parking code. So again, just introducing Alec. And then wanted to talk again tonight with you some more about the 2025 comprehensive plan update. And so last month, we kind of went over with you sort of the 101 of, of comprehensive plan updates. And some of you were on the commission in 2016 during the last comprehensive plan update. And so some of that may be, you may remember some of what happened at that time. But the city is obligated to update its comprehensive plan. It used to be every eight years. Now it's every 10 years. And so that, again, will be in 2025. And that's every jurisdiction in Clark County, including the county itself. We worked on a minor comprehensive plan update last year, an annual amendment, it was called. And so we made some changes to the comprehensive plan map and some of the text of the comprehensive plan. What we're doing here is a periodic review or a major update to the comprehensive plan. And so we're going to be cracking open pretty much every element of the comprehensive plan and making sure that it meets state law, primarily the Growth Management Act and some of the implementing regulations in the, in the WACs. And so we're going to talk with you about some of those tonight. One of the main areas of emphasis of this comprehensive plan update will be housing, because the state has adopted new regulations about projecting what the demand is for different types of housing and what the impact of, of housing regulations is on different segments of the community. So we'll talk with you a little bit more about that. I also wanted to remind you that the comprehensive plan periodic update process actually also includes updating the city's development regulations. We've been working on code updates, but there's some more code updates that we'll undertake in conjunction with updating the comprehensive plan. But those will be more so driven by state laws opposed to Le Center's preferences. All the Le Centers preferences will obviously come into it as well. But you know, like when you, for instance, compare what we did with the parking code here recently with what we're going to be doing with the, the development regulation updates over the next couple of years. Parking code update was pretty much all about what does Le Center want? What do we think is best for parking regulations in Le Center? Whereas the type of things we're going to be talking about over the next several years are what does state law say? How do we meet that? And if, if we want to, how do we go above that? So with that introduction, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Alec. And he's going to give the bulk of the staff report tonight. I may jump in at certain points. Again, he's going to be talking to you about what some of the specific comprehensive plan updates are that we've been identifying over the last month. And then sort of working toward putting together a work plan later this year that will sort of capture everything that needs to be done to update the city's comprehensive plan. So with that, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Alec.
Question for you to start.
Yeah.
Are we, are you going to do this all in-house or are we going to contract?
Well, it depends on what you mean by that, because I'm a contractor. But.
You're part of us in-house.
It would be done all in-house. Yeah. I might, and I think I mentioned this last month. You may have been gone, but the, I might at times pull in other experts at WSP, such as a traffic engineer, a natural resource scientist, or an economist sometimes, especially like when we talk about housing needs and demands for the future. I might draw on a housing economist.
Didn't they contract out the 2016 update?
I thought that that was primarily Eric Eiseman and Jet Planning. I'm trying to remember the name of the person there. But yeah, it was, I think it was partially contracted at least.
Yeah, the first page or the second page in the acknowledgements listed a company there, if you want to.
Elizabeth Decker, I think, was the name that I'm remembering now.
Quick question. Before Alex gets started, I had written down roadmap slash work plan. How far are we out as far as getting at least an overview of what it looks like? The tasks are for the planning commissioners versus WSP? And what are those things that, are we a month or two out still from getting something that kind of gives us a sense of what is the task ahead of us for planning commissioners?
Well, we're starting to answer that question tonight. I mean, we're going to hit upon what some of the major things are that the city has to accomplish. But I think the work plan will come next month or in December. It's fairly extensive. It's going to be fairly extensive. But the work plan, I think, will provide a nice summary for you of here's kind of the major task that we need to undertake. But I think more to sort of the point of what you're asking is sort of the division of labor between staff and the planning commission, I think, is, if I remember what you were asking, I, I think you had the same question last month. But the, I mean, in general, staff is going to be the technical, doing the technical work, making updates, making the recommendations to you. And so your role in the comprehensive plan update will remain the same as it has been in, in code updates, which is that you'll be sort of the advisory body, hearing what our recommendations are, helping tailor them to local circumstances or your knowledge of Le Center a little bit better. But what I don't expect, even though you may jump in and give opinions on it, what I don't expect is that you're going to be doing the technical work, like writing the policy at first or completing a housing needs assessment or, or any of that. That, that will be the role of staff. And then you'll, your role again, as I said, will be to sort of tailor that and tweak it to, to your knowledge of, of Le Center and what, what you understand to be the community's preferences. So I don't know if that helps answer the question.
Thanks.
But.
Yeah.
Any other questions then, before we let Alec jump in? Okay.
Thanks, Ethan. Thanks for the intro into this topic and to me. Happy to be here. Glad to be on this side of the Cascades and not up there attending virtually. It's not, it's not quite the same. So again, thanks for having me here. So first, do a really brief overview of kind of, a little closer? Sorry.
Just pull up.
I'll pull it right to my mouth. Okay. So just a quick overview of where the comp plan comes from, periodic review update. These are updated state statutes, statutes from RCW 36.70A and WAC 365-186 from the state legislature. And these generally specifically pertain to comp plans and development regulations for jurisdictions. So whether the county or the city. As a staff, have completed the preliminary review of the checklist provided by the Department of Commerce. And previous meetings, you saw that checklist is blank at that time. We've gone through and did a fairly thorough analysis. Still to be completed, there's still some outstanding items that we're working on. But that's shown in attachment A in this memo. Items that are highlighted in yellow in that attachment are key or substantial regulation items that are out of compliance with staff recommended directives to bring us back into compliance for those state statutes, statutes that have been updated. So I'm going to go over some of those regulations or comprehensive plan updates that we need to do. Try to keep it kind of high level before we get in the nitty gritty of the details. Of course, with the work plan, and as we move further along, it's going to get more detailed. So the first big item is just, as we go through this process from the beginning to the end, is coordinating with Clark County, ensuring that our planning policies and other planning items are consistent with their policies as well as ours. So be constantly throughout the process, checking with Clark County, ensuring different elements of the plan, different forecasting. And as I discussed further, to ensure those are consistent from the higher level down to the city. And then that leads us to the next big element is the Buildable Lands Report and Growth Projections. Several of the update items in the comprehensive plan will require further review, analysis, and coordination are impacted by the Buildable Lands Report. This has yet to be completed. Clark County is working on this. We'll be doing our own as well. And be coordinated with Clark County to review the population, housing, employment projections, and allocations within the city of the center. Growth rates and projections are expected to be released in December of this year by the Office of Financial Management, I believe. Correct, Ethan? And that's a key part of the Buildable Lands Report and Growth Projections. So those are oncoming, but those will be huge key elements of doing our housing analysis and transportation element and so forth as we proceed in this process.
Good question.
Yes.
I think it's out of the BL office. Use for justification for extending urban growth boundary. Do we anticipate trying to do that?
Sorry. There we go. I don't know. I, my intuition says no, because if you look at the amount of available residential land in Le Center, especially south of Le Center Road as you're driving into the city, there's, there's quite a bit of capacity there that's not used up. There's some additional capacity in different places within the city. Then if you look at commercial and industrial land, that's, especially in the case of industrial, that's pretty much completely all available right now within the junction planning area. So if I had to bet on it right now, I would say probably not. But that'll, as Alec indicated, depend up on the projections that the city and the county agree to. And typically, what the Office of Financial Management does is they issue projections of a low growth rate, a medium growth rate, and a high growth rate. And then jurisdictions will work, will work with the county to select what we think is the appropriate rate for Le Center. And so depending on what you choose, you know, if you choose a high growth rate, the land would, the assumption then is that the land would get used up faster. You're, you're required to, Le Center in every jurisdiction in the state is required to maintain 20 years of, of buildable land. So that's kind of what the, the line in the sand is.
So if, at this point, we projected we didn't have 20 years of buildable land, would that trigger them urban growth boundary discussion?
That would, yeah. That would definitely trigger the discussion, and that would be kind of the basis of, of thinking about whether we need an expansion or not. However, there is some state law that we might or might not touch on tonight. But there's some state law that talks about prioritizing other methods of accommodating growth first, such as changing zoning and comp plan designations to accommodate that growth before you immediately jump to expanding the urban growth boundaries. So we have to at least show that we have looked at what some of those other alternatives are.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan. So jumping into the housing element, there's, like Ethan hinted earlier, there's new requirements for the housing analysis per state statute. And this requires the city in the housing analysis to consider varying levels of income, emergency housing and shelters, racially disparate impacts and displacement in the housing analysis and forecasting throughout the city and in the comprehensive plan. And WSP will be completing a housing needs assessment to meet the requirements of the state statute or the Growth Management Act. So that's going to be a, a pretty big undertaking by WSP. And especially with those new elements that have been added from the state, because previously, we didn't need those elements in the housing analysis. And then the next element of the comprehensive plan to be updated is transportation, since the Buildable Lands Report and housing, housing projections and population projections and forecasting. These will only be reviewed as long as well, as, as well as employment projections in the transportation system plan and ensure these are generally compliant with the projections of the comprehensive plan. So just ensuring there's concurrency and things are similar and goals and policies are agreeing with each other throughout the whole plan and the different elements again. And this updates to include a directive that the TSB be updated at the soonest opportunity to include the new population, housing, and employment projections. Because the last TSB was updated in 2019, which is fairly recent. But we just want to make sure it's, again, consistent with these projections.
Question on that, I guess for Brian. One of the key elements here is how we have our roads classified. And I know previously, we, I think in the last comp plan, we talked about upgrading some of our, our streets, our roads. Has that been done?
Upgrading is in upclassifying them?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that the last Transportation Capital Facilities Plan, which would look at our road classifications, was done in 2017, I want to say. So it's still, you know, within the range of that plan, the horizon of that plan. But it is something that we could consider taking another look at.
Yeah.
It might make sense as a part of this.
Make sure that if there's a plan to do that, we do it so it gets incorporated in this TSB. I would encourage that.
Yeah, we're, so we're in the process of updating our sewer and park plans. This, we just kicked off both of those projects, so they'll be completed early next year, sort of in anticipation of integrating those into the comp plan work as well. Water plan is, is done at Clark Public Utilities. So transportation will be the other one that we could take a look at.
Will some both of them come here for review?
Yes, they will. Well, yeah. Parks for sure.
Parks, yeah.
And I think that, and as a part of, yeah, as a part of the comp plan sewer will as well.
The, so the question on the parks plan, you know, there's a good portion of that is based upon level of service, which is based upon population. What population that figures are we using in there? Particularly since we're going to have new ones here shortly, in two years.
Yeah. So the goal is to basically use a placeholder, population growth, kind of use our crystal ball and get a best guess, guess of what that growth rate will be. And then as we get to the tail end of adopting those plans, our hope is that we should have some data from the, you know, the comp plan that we can then plug in.
So it will get updated with the new thing?
Yes.
Because I know that plan is pretty, it's pretty sensitive to population in terms of level of service.
It is.
So I would, I just want to reemphasize one point that's being made here, which is that all the comprehensive plan elements are required to be consistent. And the state law says that. And there's, they're required to use the same land use map assumptions. And then the land use map is also then based upon population and employment projections. And so it's a little bit up for interpretation what consistency means, because it ends up being practically infeasible to update all of these plans at the same time, because the city just doesn't have the budget resources to redo the sewer plan, the transportation plan, the parks plan, the comprehensive plan all at once. So those reviews get staggered. So when we look at some of the projections in those plans, and Brian mentioned the parks plan and the sewer plan, those will probably share population and employment projections with this round of comprehensive planning. So those will be very similar, if not exactly the same, in terms of the projections. But some of the other plans, the transportation system plan specifically, since it was recently updated in 2019, we're not going to completely reopen, we're not anticipating completely reopening it for the projection issue. Instead, what we're going to do is we're going to look at the projections that were used in there and, and sort of, you know, eyeball it and say, is that generally consistent with the projections that we're using here? Or is it completely inconsistent? And we're hoping the answer is that it's generally consistent, so that we don't have to sort of update that again, because then that generates the analysis, you know, similar to the parks plan, generates the analysis again about what infrastructure, roads, and so forth is required based upon a new projection. So there's going to be a little bit of judgment in terms of, of what consistency means. But the, at the end of the day, I think we're going to be able to say that these, these plans are generally consistent in terms of the growth rates and the.
When we're going into the sewer plan and parks plan, do we have current population data? Or are we still based upon the 2016 comp plan?
So each year, OFM releases population data. So we have sort of a running total. And someday, we'll have census data too, to kind of fact, gut check those numbers.
Question regarding the sewer plan. Is that sewer plan put together to map out how we're going to reach those properties within city limits going forward? And what's going to be required to hook them up if, in fact, they decide to build or on the property? Is that, is that part of that plan?
That's correct. So similar to the other plans, transportation plan, you know, shows the, the planned transportation network that's necessary to serve, you know, the 20-year growth. Same, same idea with sewer.
That's what I thought, but okay. Thank you.
Okay. That basically was a good segue to our next element was Capital Facilities Plan Updates, which has to do with park plan and the sewer plan. Again, we're just going to be checking for consistency, reviewing those with the comprehensive plan and the other elements. And again, include the most recent growth projections from the state in Clark County. And we'll have to do further coordination with Clark Public Utilities for Water, Clark Calletts Fire, Clark Calletts Fire and Rescue and Le Center School District to discuss the update requirements and consistency with the periodic review process. So there's other elements to capital facilities, but those are the, the key ones and part of this plan update that will be needed to be reviewed and looked at. And then the next element is tribal coordination. This is also new with the Growth Management Act and the state required updates. So this gives tribes the option to coordinate planning efforts with local jurisdictions. So here in the center, obviously be the Calletts. They'd be able to elect if they want to participate or not in our planning efforts. If the tribes elect to participate, we must execute a mutually agreeable memorandum of agreement between the city and the tribe regarding collaboration and participation in planning processes. And this requires planning with tribes to coordinate development for any areas planned for urban growth. So any, anywhere in the urban growth boundary. And the city is required to engage with the Calletts if that tribe chooses to participate in the planning process. So that will be determined as we go through this process. And we'll coordinate and reach out with the Calletts tribe and any other applicable tribes that might be out there to see if they want to participate in our planning processes. And then the final element, the comprehensive plan update.
Can I ask a question real quick before we move on?
Yeah, go ahead.
If the tribe does choose to participate, will that be more at a staff level? Or would that be at a, a public level for those participations? Would it be done through memorandums and communications and merging things that way? Or would it be a, a real work, work party type of environment?
I think, if I can answer that, sorry.
You can go ahead.
I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to direct that question to you, Ethan, or just in general from the group.
One of the requirements under that new regulation that Alec is talking about is if the tribe elects to participate, then the city and the tribe have to enter into a memorandum of agreement about how the planning process will play out between them. And so all of that stuff about how they'll participate, when, how often, what items are up for discussion would be worked out in that memorandum. This is new. It wasn't a requirement before. It might have been a good idea that you include any tribes in your planning process, but it wasn't a requirement, it wasn't a requirement. It's still not a requirement for the city. It's, it's an option for the tribe to participate. And then if the tribe says they want to participate, then it becomes a requirement for the city to include them in the process and develop this. for the city to include them in the process and develop this memorandum of of agreement.
I think that came up a few years ago before, maybe it's been around for a little while as the option.
Well, the tribe has an existing, and Brian may know a little bit more about this than I do, but the tribe has an existing memorandum of agreement with the city, right? But it doesn't really address planning process, addresses some other things.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, and I guess I think you're right. It was out there, but obviously their last comp plan update, you know, the tribe was a little not quite where they are today as far as, you know, development and or land. So I can see this being a much bigger thing on the radar this time around. And it's something that we'll work into our ongoing conversations with them that, you know, we already have a multitude of things we're talking to them about. So this is a good one to throw into the mix.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions before I move on? Okay. The next item, these are optional elements. First of them was climate change mitigation and resilience. The last planning commission hearing, this is lightly touched upon, as an optional element the city could potentially pursue. And this must include mitigation. So mitigation would be for greenhouse gas reduction and resiliency planning, which includes climate impacts, preparedness, response and recovery with supporting comp plan goals and policies. However, the city is ineligible for guidance from the Department of Commerce because they're kind of well ahead of that process with the with guiding and writing up the goals and policies and drafting. But the city still can choose to include this element. Again, they just want to have necessarily DOC structure there to help them through that process. And then next would be sub area plans. The city's undertaking a planning effort for the Timmin Landing in downtown sub area or sub areas. And these may include updated goals and policies in the comprehensive plan. And then the existing junction sub area plan, that will be subject to review with consistency again. Just hammering that word consistency in this comprehensive plan, that's going to be throughout the process, just ensuring that meets the projections, billable land reports, all other elements, and it's updated accordingly. Again, these are optional elements, but these are elements that the city is choosing to pursue specifically with the sub area plans. And before I jump into the city code regulation that we have to make amendments for, are there any other questions before I take another deep dive?
Was the contract been loaded up for the sewer plan?
That's a good question. Yes, we, the proposals were due a few weeks ago. We received two, one from WSP and one from a planning firm called Dowell. So those are under review and scoring as we speak.
Okay, so I'm going to hop over into development regulations. So these are specific areas in the Center Municipal Code that will need updated or considered to be updated per the Department of Commerce periodic review checklist. The first one has to do with allowed uses. State legislation has been updated to require permanent supportive housing or transitional housing to be allowed where residences and hotels are allowed. And that basically applies to almost every zone in the city. So low density residential, medium density residential, mixed use, residential professional, commercial districts, sub area districts. And then also indoor emergency shelters and housing must be allowed in any zones which hotels are allowed. And currently hotels are only allowed in the Lister Junction Plan zoning district. So those zones within that district will have to allow indoor emergency shelters and housing since hotels can be allowed there.
So does that mean that the hotel would become an emergency shelter?
Not necessarily.
It might help Alec if we talk to them a little bit about the definitions of some of that stuff. And I know that you had some of that in your your notes. But this is obviously something that we'll talk about in quite a bit more detail about what each of those things is and what that could mean for the city. I mean, I think at first glance, what we need to remember is that allowing something doesn't mean that it's automatically going to happen. You obviously know that because, you know, we've come up with zoning regulations before, such as cottage housing, doesn't necessarily mean it's automatically going to happen. But so, but but I think most of these uses that Alec is talking about are in response to the homelessness crisis, the affordability affordable housing crisis and the state's efforts to try and make sure that those things basically aren't zoned out of existence, you know, because if jurisdictions could do that, some, you know, certainly some of them would would try and do that. So that's kind of the origin of it. But I'll let Alec define some of these things for you as as the state has defined them. And then, as I said, we'll be talking about those things in quite a bit more depth and what, you know, what that might mean for the city. It could be as simple as just changing, inserting it in a use table and saying permitted. Or it could be coming up with some development regulations that go along with those, you know, to make sure they're compatible with the community and that sort of thing.
Yeah. And so as Ethan said, here's the definition for permanent supportive housing per RCW 3670A 30. Subsidized leased housing with no limit on length of stay that prioritizes people who need comprehensive support services to retain tenancy is also paired with onsite or offsite voluntary services designed to support a person living with a complex and disabling behavioral health or physical health condition. And then I think I touched into emergency housing.
What about transition?
Kind of loops them into the same definition. Yeah.
And so the state is requiring that those are allowed uses in every residential zone?
Where residences, yeah, where residents or residences or hotels are allowed.
I can imagine that's going to be controversial.
Yeah. And then the definition for emergency housing is a project that provides housing and supportive services to homeless persons or families for up to 60 days. So there's a time limit for emergency shelters, which those are supposed to be allowed where hotels are allowed. And then other sections to be updated are required by the state include group homes, manufactured homes and daycares. The city code defines group homes and may need updating per state statute. Just need a review to ensure we're meeting or complying with state code. LCMC, Lister Municipal Code, the Junction Plan Zoning District makes group homes a conditional use, whereas single family homes are permitted. Other code sections, LDR, medium density residential, RP, commercial, mixed use cottage housing should be updated to allow group homes as those are areas where residential uses are permitted. So therefore group homes have to be allowed in these spaces as well. Or we can pursue the route of the definition of a residential use could be updated to include group homes. So you don't have to go through the whole process of allowing these this use in each of those zones. And it just kind of catches it all in one. But again, we'll pursue that as we get more in details of doing these code updates. Next, our daycare is now required to be allowed in all zones for residential or commercial uses. So currently in the center, it's unlimited use in LDR, low density residential. It's not a mentioned use in medium density residential. Residential professional district allows residences per the low density residential and medium density residential standards, but needs updating to allow daycares. The commercial zone, C1 and C3, needs to be amended to allow family daycares as well. And the junction plan districts will need updating to include that as well. And then in Lister Municipal Code 18270, it's a section of code that regulates limited uses. We need to review that to ensure that family daycare regulations are not too restrictive in their use and making sure the city is not over regulating those. So that's also part of the update. And then lastly, in this section, our has to do with manufactured homes. So in medium density residential, C1, C3, commercial and junction plan districts, these are to be amended to allow manufactured homes as they're not currently allowed in those zones in the city. We also need to review the low density residential zoning and the manufactured homes code 18.180 and the municipal code to ensure codes, the code does not over regulate manufactured homes per new guidance from the state.
I don't think any better division we have mobile homes at the junction of the TRX zone.
What is the legislative act that has brought this into fruition? Is there something specific that I could read more about?
I mean, you could start.
State legislation, this is a very large, more than one specific act that this is coming from?
Yeah, there's several of them. In the checklist that's attached to this memo, it shows what specific section in the state code that's been amended.
Thank you.
Updated for these items. And all these items I'm discussing are highlighted in yellow. There's several of them, but it'd be the second half of that checklist that are for development regulations. You'll find these.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments. One is with regard to residential structures occupied by persons with handicaps and group care homes for children as well as manufactured homes. I believe that the origin of that is actually the National Fair Housing Act, which said you can't treat those uses any differently than any other type of residential use. So that had that then filtered down to the states. The Fair Housing Act has been around since probably the 60s or the 70s, but but it's been changed over time to accommodate some of these uses. Family daycare provider is a smaller scale daycare provider, I think Lister's code, if I remember right, defines it as six kids or less. So you're basically talking about somebody that invites a few children into their house and cares for them, you know, on a daily basis or whatever, not a huge commercial daycare provider. So kind of kind of akin to a home occupation more than a than a commercial business per se. And the the group care homes, you know, those can also be housed in, in, you know, for instance, a single family home. So that's not necessarily a really large care facility. That that could just be a single family home that's repurposed or built specifically for care of children or handicap individuals. I was working on a project recently here in Cascade Locks where same same issue that the developer wanted to create six lots for what they called residential care on the outside, looks just like a single family home, but the homes were going to be for the care of 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 handicap individuals. So I just wanted to make that comment about the scale of some of these, some of these uses, because sometimes it's it's our tendency to kind of jump to conclusions about how big we're talking about here. So anyways, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thanks, Ethan.
We're talking about adult, I would call them adult family homes. My mom was with one for many years. I think it maxes like five, maybe six residences, I think is max. And so that's what we're talking about here, right? That could be in fact patterned throughout our residential, current residential community.
I don't know, to be honest. I mean, we'll have to look into that a little bit further in terms of what the ceiling is when we sort of get into some of these detailed discussions, you know, if there's a maximum that.
There is.
For for group care. But it could be that there is.
Yeah, but RCW says six for a year, and then I think you could go up to 10. But obviously you have to have the capacity for that. You can't just add more people to the space. But yeah, that's how we do it right now.
Okay.
Well, my reason with that question I was asking there is that, does this, you think, going to provide a pathway for a developer or homeowner perhaps to expand their property to accommodate adult family home residences? And and such, will it get some preferential treatment is regarding our code in order to accommodate that?
It might provide them a pathway to do that. I don't know if it would be preferential treatment, because again, the idea is that these uses be treated the same as other types of residential uses and put on par with each other, not elevated above other types of residential uses. But it could be that, you know, that that provides them a pathway to do that. But at the same time, if they wanted to do that now, they could approach the city and ask about that. And it sounds like Jess has some.
Maybe through a variance or something of that nature?
I don't even know if it would require a variance, but.
They exist, by the way.
Yeah, we already have adult family homes.
That I know for fact.
Sequoia, I think is the name. I always forget. But yeah, they have six residents, I believe. And no one would, it's just a house with people living in it.
It wasn't, it wasn't modified to accommodate this?
Just the ramp up, you know, the front.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just a ramp and.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
You really couldn't tell like so until you.
And I just, and I just had to look up the RCW code because it tells us what to do. The state's already told us what to do.
And and this is also saying that any area that allows hotels or residential must allow placement of rentable manufactured homes, even a commercial zone? Or is that what?
Well, you can't, in the case of manufactured homes, you can't treat those differently than other types of than than site built housing. And so if somebody has a lot that's zoned residential, they can place a manufactured home on it. And that's already the case in the LDR zone, even though you may not realize that. And then some of the other zones that Alec mentioned, MDR, don't specifically talk about that. And so we want to amend that to comply with the state's requirements to allow those type of uses to be treated the same as site built housing. Now, that doesn't talk about homeowners associations at all, which might prohibit manufactured housing, you know, through a variety of methods, either by outright saying they're not allowed, or by establishing square foot footage minimums, size minimums for housing so that, you know, it ends up not being a manufactured house. So that's kind of back to the comment I made a couple of minutes ago, which is, we may align our code with the state law, but that doesn't necessarily mean that there's not other regulations, such as homeowners association requirements that would prohibit these or or not allow them, or or that even if those other regulations weren't in place, that somebody's automatically going to go go do that.
Thanks, Ethan. I'm going to hop into impact fees. This pertains to Lister Municipal Code 3.35. The city may optionally update exempt uses from the impact fee collection. And these new exempts exemptions for impact fees include early learning facilities and low income and emergency housing developments. It's an optional element. The city could include in exemptions, but it's updated list provided by the state. And also additional uses that are eligible for impact fee deferral, which the city may update LC MC for compliance or the impact fees code. And there's a pretty lengthy list of items that could be eligible for impact fee deferral. And that's included in the checklist in that. eligible for impact fee deferral, and that's included in the checklist in the RCW that it references. The next item is.
So this is saying you have to include.
Yeah, it's an optional. Yep. And then jumping into tribal planning quickly, again, if they choose to participate in the planning process, we have to take a look at Title eighteen or the development section of the municipal code. Must be updated to include a code provision to match the tribal planning coordination efforts. So just touching on that briefly. Next is the critical areas ordinance. As part of the checklist, it references the critical areas ordinance checklist, which is also provided by the Department of Commerce. This will be reviewed by staff and outline any necessary updates. Last time the critical areas ordinance has been updated was in twenty nineteen. And state since then has updated best available science documents that have to be used in drafting and codifying critical areas ordinances. These have been the best available science documents have been updated for critical aquifer recharge areas and riparian management zones. So again, staff will go through that checklist and review and update accordingly the critical areas ordinance throughout the comprehensive plan update process.
So I just wanted to jump in there really quick on that one. One of the first tasks that I worked on with the City of the Center was updating the critical areas ordinance, and some of you might remember that. So since then, in the last approximately three years, the state has updated some of its best available science for critical areas specifically for what are called riparian habitats. So riparian habitat is the area, vegetated area adjacent to a stream. And there's been a system in place for, I guess, you would say, at least a couple of decades now, that said that the riparian area was based upon the type of stream that you had. So if you had a fish-bearing stream, you had a much wider riparian area required. And then if you went down to non-fish-bearing streams, either seasonal or perennial, the riparian area became much narrower. The update, and one of the reasons why we did the update in twenty nineteen was to keep that existing system in place for a couple more years, because there was, we knew there was new guidance that was going to come out, and the new guidance is now not based upon the type of stream that you have, fish-bearing, non-fish-bearing, seasonal or perennial. It's now based upon the what they call the site potential tree height. And there's hundreds of pages of science that that WDFW has collated and produced on this. And it, this is per, this is an issue that's percolating up to the surface throughout the state. WSP is currently working on the City of Vancouver's Critical Areas Ordinance. We just got done with the City of Washtugle's Critical Areas Ordinance, and the City of Washtugle may have been the first jurisdiction in the state to deal with this that I that I know about. Anyways, so what that's going to do is require a constant buffer width, not by stream classification, but by all streams. And so some of those smaller streams will have larger buffers on them, whereas the larger streams would have buffers similar to what you have now, possibly even a little bit smaller. So that's going to be sort of a fundamental change in the way that that these critical areas are regulated, streams specifically, and and the habitat areas around them. So that's going to be another interesting discussion for the city over the next couple of years to to be having, but I just wanted to give you the heads heads up on that one. Sorry, was there a question?
For me?
It looked like.
What did you call the tree thing?
Site, site potential tree height.
Site potential.
S P T H. Yeah. And so the time we talk, when we talk about this in detail, I'll probably have one of our natural resources scientists, Dusty Day, who helped with the last critical areas ordinance update come and talk to you about this a little bit more.
With pictures. With pictures.
Yeah, with pictures. He he uses pictures when he's talking to me about it, too. Because he can explain it a lot better, but it's based up on the concept that within certain areas of the state and within certain soil types, you're going to get a certain native height of tree, and that height of tree defines the riparian zone because as the tree falls down, this is kind of my rough understanding of this, as the tree falls down toward the stream, that becomes an organic input into the stream that helps water quality, helps build habitat for fish and for other animals that use that streamside area. So they decided to define it that way, and they feel that the state at least feels that that's more consistent with sort of the scientific understanding of how these areas work than the old classification system of type S, type F, type N streams where it just, you know, it got narrower as you went down. So.
When a tree falls on a potentially buildable land, don't people take the chainsaw out and cut it up and move it and get rid of it? I mean, it seems like it would apply in a forestry situation.
Yeah. And so I don't know if it's yeah, always so much about clearing trees that fall down or not, but just defining the width of that riparian area by the height of a of a tree, you know, a mature tree. So what's that? Yes, the potential height. So I just wanted, sorry, that was a little bit of a diversion here, but I just wanted to mention that 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 would probably be one of the main updates coming out of that. And then we've been tracking some some other things for the critical areas ordinance based upon what we've seen and implementing it that, you know, might help staff and applicants understand the critical areas ordinance better.
Okay, basically wrapped up at this point. Looking at the next steps, again, like we were discussing early on this meeting, we're working on the work plan and timeline to be provided for the next hearing or meeting in November or December, just depending on how we work out on some items that we're working through at the moment. And I'll give a better reference for you as the planning commission to understand key tasks and goals as we move forward from now through June of twenty twenty five, when this is to be adopted and said and done. Yeah, go ahead.
Alex, I think the thing for me is getting something. I'm interested in kind of understanding what the magnitude is of this project.
It's huge.
I mean, and it appears to continue to get larger. But what is, you know, are we talking about? You know, is you know, just giving some, putting it in some form that gives us some sense of the enormity of this project. You know? So that's that's.
I I just. The timeline to do this, this seems like a large Gantt chart that needs to be built, not how all these pieces fit, because they're going to be independent.
Yeah.
This appears to be a lot larger task than we did in two thousand and sixteen.
Yes.
I wasn't involved in that update, so I can't speak to that one so much, but I would say it is a large task, but it's not overwhelming or impossible. And some of these things will start being sort of put into bite-sized chunks. The WSP and the city staff still need to kind of work out some of these these pieces. I mean, I guess my operating assumption right now is that the city wants to spend as little money as possible on WSP. So we're going to talk about that further with Brian, but I guess what I'm seeing is there's some optional things that the city could do, climate change. Maybe the city doesn't elect to take on optional updates as an example, and so and only focus on the required updates. So those are some of the things that we're gonna, you know, be be discussing. And I think I said maybe a couple of months ago that this project can be as big as the city wants it to be, right? And if if you wanted to completely redo your comp plan, and somebody mentioned graphics and all of that kind of stuff, I mean, all of that stuff is, I guess, up for discussion, but again, my operating assumption is that that it, the city is going to want to focus this on the required elements as much as possible.
You touched on a question I was going to ask Brian, is the city adequately budgeted for this? I mean, this is this, I believe, is just the required elements are significantly larger than we did last time.
So as has been discussed, it's sort of a multi-year process to do this update. We operate in an annual budget, so there is money included in next year's annual budget to to start this process. So I guess to answer your question, yes.
Well, but I hope you're not you're not basing that upon last update experience, because we had near nowhere near this many of, you know, changes in the law. And that we're going to have to address. And it looks like a lot of these, we're going to touch multiple elements in our code. That's all labor and time. Just the caution.
I have a question relating to the work plans that were existing prior to introducing this comp plan update. Will this be then the sole focus of the planning commission to review staff's and cities' work before it goes to council through June twenty twenty five? Or will there still be other elements, including like the junction planning, for example, and and other things in the works? Or will this be the sole focus?
I mean, this will be one of the city's main projects.
For the planning commission, I think, is is what I mean.
The planning commission, but then you'll have the Tim and Landin Historic Downtown Suburban.
We still will be involved with those. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could see some other, you know, code code updates that potentially may come forward as a need that will have to fit into this process as well. But that that's really where developing the work plan helps, because that kind of figures out what that workload is going to be, you know, then we can talk about, okay, do we want to meet more frequently potentially? That's something that I think is somewhat common during comp plan updates. There's a more frequent meeting schedule for the planning commission, because there's more work that needs to have be happening. But it's sort of, as that work plan develops, that's when we can really have those discussions.
Thanks.
You know, I think Jeremy alluded to our previous task list. We have a long list of code changes that we'd like to address, and it'd be nice if we're opening this section of code for the comp plan. Let's see if there's something off our original list, then we can be doing it at the same time.
Yep. No, I agree with that.
So I think that's maybe all we had on this item unless there's any other questions. Didn't mean to overwhelm you or anything, but we did want to start to hit up on some of the main things that that the this process will involve.
Well, based on what you've shared so far, it sounds to me that there's going to be a a number, I'm not sure what that number is, five, six, ten, that are ones that we, the planning commissioner, are going to need to wrestle with with regards to, do we do we just go along with what the Department Ecology or Commerce, whatever, puts forth? Or do we say we want to, we want to expand on that and put the effort into to to make it more applicable to the center? You know, those, so there's going to be those items in there. I'm not sure how many of those where we're going to want to have some discussion and do some work on, hurt our heads on, so to speak. Which also might mean, in fact, we would have open house or to, you know, have city, you know, public comment, you know, regarding some of these things to get input if there's. I'm not sure if there are any of those, but there may be some. Where we want to get the community input on some things that that were going to be included in the comp plan that that we want to put some extra effort into, so.
And there's definitely a public outreach component to this.
Along the same line, the comp plan has a whole series, if you've looked at them, policies and goals. And I would think that the city council ought to be participating in defining those goals and policies. And I I just wonder if you've thought about how or whether it'd be appropriate to do that. And it might be a joint, I would like to see a joint session where we specifically go down goal, policy, goal, policy, and get a head nod from our leadership that that's what they want to do.
Good, good point, Dennis. Yep.
Yes, we've started to think about that a little bit. I mean, I think that there's going to be multiple junctures at which we want to check in with them. One is going to be pretty early on when we establish the work plan. And we'll probably at that point want to talk to the city council and kind of give them the one oh one about comp plan updates like we talked about last month, as well as here's kind of the key required items that we're going to be updating to, you know, give them kind of the same setup as you've had, answer their questions about what comp plan updates are and what different pieces of this mean. And then we're planning for a couple. My operating assumption right now is that we might have two public open houses, you know, and maybe one of those is toward the beginning or sort of the middle beginning of the project where we invite the public to come in and we talk about again, what the comp plan update is and what we're expecting to update. And then we kind of report back to them sort of toward two thirds or three quarters of the way done with the process to say, here's what we came up with, here's what planning commission discussed. You know, before it sort of moves into the adoption phase of the of the project. But then throughout the project also provides some periodic updates to the city council about how the planning commercial work is going, what we're talking about, what sort of policy direction is being forged with with the planning commission in in getting their input and and some of those and some of those policies so that we're not sort of you know, assuming one thing and then they're assuming another type of a thing. I mean, the one, some of these issues are going to be somewhat difficult to to deal with, just in the the sense that they make us think about things that that we're not necessarily used to thinking about every day and that that, you know, quite frankly, that the state wants us to think about. But in other cases, maybe we want and need to think about about them. And so, you know, all of those kind of things are going to be coming into into play. But the state is kind of the heavy on this. So at the end of the day, we have to be able to demonstrate that we comply with the Growth Management Act, because if we're out of compliance and some jurisdictions have gotten out of compliance before, that sort of starts having some ramifications in terms of city funding and being able to apply for grants and that that sort of thing. I don't know if Brian's ever dealt with that. Lawsuits. So some of these things, you know, at the end of the day, we say, we might say we like this, we love it. Some of the things we might say we don't like this, but we have to do it. But we can, it helps to be able to point to the state and say we have to do this. Right? Because I mean, if we were having these type of discuss, some of these type of discussions without that context, then we might choose not to in some cases. So it it it's helpful to have that context, I think. And and at the end of the day, I think most people, even though there might be a variety of opinions on these things, they sort of understand that, hey, state, state law, we gotta, we gotta comply with this. If I don't like it, I can vote, go to the voting booth, but I can't really, you know, at the at the level of the planning commission or the city council, I don't know that there's necessarily anything that that we can change about it. But that's kind of a black and white analysis of of the issue, but in in other cases, there may be some leeway one way or another, a little bit to define things a little bit more in listeners interests. And then other things there, other times there won't be. And we'll talk about what some of those those things are.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
It's a lot.
Good summary.
Yeah, definitely appreciate the 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 summary. And, you know, I think like my twenty second kind of synopsis of it is, you know, with this comprehensive plan, with the new laws from the state, there's like a compliance portion that just has to be done. And then part of that compliance is like a congruence of like, if you're, if you're going to use this much land, then how do you get your people in and out of that land? And did you account for this? And and then I think there's like a lot of these optional things that maybe we we won't be able to get to. But, you know, based on like some of these open houses that we might be asked to, you know, you know, there's like really push for, there's a big push for climate right now and walkability. And I I think, you know, maybe some citizens will try to get that percolated, percolated up to, you know, just for us to pay attention to it. So it'll be interesting. It's one of those things where, you know, you want to be compliant. But at the same time, if 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 it's paced and everyone kind of picks up their pace just a hair, it could it could be more than just compliance. It can be quite a a nice document if we're proactive about it. So hopefully we can, we can do that together. So thank you, guys. That was very helpful, taking something very technical, making it edible, digestible, not edible. That twenty minutes hasn't started yet. Are we are ready to move on to the next business? Were you guys good on that? So moving on to one dot eight A, next code updates. And we just have a bunch of code updates. It's about to be dropped, but I'll let you take that away.
Well, so there's some discussion. So we finished the parking code, we finished temporary use code. And there was, we kind of took a month or two off in terms of code updates. But there was some desire consensus to talk again about code updates that the planning commission might start working on. And so this agenda item is really just kind of a segue from the last agenda item. And now you know that there's a number of different code updates that we're going to be working on. And and a lot of those don't depend specifically on the connection to the comprehensive plan. For instance, if we're going to update the critical areas ordinance, we could start that today. There's nothing having to do with population or employment that we're waiting on or direction in the comp plan necessarily that we have to wait on. Some of the the housing issues that we talked about and the uses, family, family daycares, manufactured manufactured housing. We can start working on those cut code updates. And I would suggest that that we do that because as we sort of move on in the next couple of years, it's getting, the comp plan piece of it's going to sort of take over more than the than the code updates. And so, you know, I don't, I don't know if we necessarily need to develop a priority list. We could, and we can put that in front of you if that's if that's what you would prefer. But recognizing that some of these these code updates are are required. I guess my thought would be to address some of the housing code updates, permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, indoor emergency shelters, family daycare, manufactured housing, the housing for persons with handicaps and group care. We can sort of start whittling down on some of those things to, you know, first of all, do some research like we always do at the beginning of the code updates. Put that research in front of you and say, this is what the state law says. This is what some of the research is out there on this. And then start drafting some of these code sections while the comp plan process is starting to to play out. So that would be kind of be my suggestion on it. And then there's kind of another group of code updates. One of them, Alec, I don't think mentioned unless I didn't hear it, electrical, electrical vehicle infrastructure subdivision regulations. That's a really minor one, just lining up some sentences with what the state law says. Impact fees Alec mentioned, tribal participation, planning. And then an optional one about affordable housing and and incentives to encourage affordable housing. And then again, that's optional. So if the planning commission is agreeable to it, again, since these are required, I think what we would recommend is start working on some of those housing and use issues. And we'll start getting some of that figured out while the rest of the process is playing out. And then we'll talk with probably, of course, Brian, but then also the city attorney about some of these other issues, impact fees and subdivision regulations. And they might be able to work on on some of those simultaneously. So Brian, I don't know if you have any input on that, but I think our suggestion is basically just to get going on some of those things since they're ultimately going to have to be done anyways.
Yeah, no, I think that makes good sense into Commissioner Nutbrock's point earlier, looking at the existing sort of list of of code updates that are in front of us and seeing how we can, you know, sort of, while we're at it, make some of those adjustments as well. Seems like it would be a good idea.
Definitely.
Could we bring that list in next time?
Yeah, we can do that and then.
Spend some time prioritizing those too. I'd like to at least see that again.
Yeah, we can put that in front of you and we can try and start figuring out what some of these topical categories are. So, you know, if we open up one code and then we notice that our list contains five other things that need to happen in that code section, then we sort of make that one topical category and and so forth. So we're accomplishing things in in buckets. So that was really all I wanted to say on the the new code update item.
Appreciate it. Any any thoughts, comments? Good point from Commissioner Nutbrock about bringing that list back because I I've forgotten what was on it. And I thought I'd taken a picture of it last time or something, but I didn't. But any any thoughts, discussion?
No, that's good.
Personally speaking, I I I think, you know, maybe picking, you know, picking housing and use. I mean, we we have to get in compliance and, you know, the sooner we start on that and get some language that that legally works and then we can figure out like the nuance and the leeway within it that we're allowed to to put in. I think that'd be a good start, but that's just me. All right. I think we're, I think we're good on this topic, so we'll see that next time. Appreciate, appreciate all the work from you guys doing that. Are we ready to move on to one dot nine A, the community development staff report? All right, take it away, please.
Sorry, one second while I navigate there. I'm going to pull up the list and you keep the map. I think that kind of seems to work best. I don't know that this is going to be a very long report tonight. I don't think there's honestly a ton of updates here, but number thirty seven is the ACES view subdivision. We've talked about that in some previous meetings. That's a preliminary plat for around seventy lots. I think it's actually sixty or sixty nine. And so that was deemed complete a little while ago. And we've been reviewing that. And there's some things we need to coordinate with on the applicant, coordinate with the applicant on. Specifically, there's an oak, large oak tree on site, and we want to know how they're going to treat that because it's, it's, they've stated that it's a critical area, but they have impacts in the oak tree. And they haven't told us exactly what they're going to do with that. So we have a meeting with them on Friday morning to discuss that. There was a pre-application conference for something called the Harrier House, which is a house owned by Dinah McLean in Tim and Landin. And she's looking at some possibilities there to turn a portion of that residence into a business, keep the other portion as a residence, possibly for like an artisan or something like that who would live there on site. But then perhaps have like, for instance, an art gallery or perhaps it's somebody that produces wine or beer on site. So we were talking with her about that this past week. And then there's the Valley View subdivision. I can't remember honestly if we've spoken about that one in the past. We probably have because it was a pre-application conference at one point. It's item forty four, the far northeastern extent there of the city along three thirty ninth. And that's, that's thirty five, four lot subdivision in LDR. Not really much in the way of critical areas there, at least in terms of streams or wetlands or anything. But there's a geologic hazard, so there's an earthquake hazard zone there. Probably won't affect the design of the site in particular. And then the last item is item forty five, which is the Black Property ADU accessory dwelling unit. So you remember that you worked on the accessory dwelling unit code last year.
First ADU?
Yes, first legal ADU. And so they're, they're moving through that process. And so we're looking at their application for completeness currently. And then after that, they'll go into formal application review. But they have, I can't remember what it is, approximately five acre plus. And so they're looking to build this, you know, a second unit in in ADU there. That would be, I can't remember, it's like maybe, well, nine hundred. I guess ultimately it would be nine hundred square feet.
Yeah, it was like just over nine hundred square foot of living space plus a garage.
Yeah.
What's the lot size, do you know?
About five acres. Yeah.
That'll fit.
Yeah. So Brian, I don't know if I missed anything critical. I feel like most of the stuff has been.
What was the one we were talking about earlier this afternoon that's with the variance request for lot widths? Is that?
Oh, that's ACES ACES view. Yeah, so ACES view has a a variance request.
Oh, yeah, I guess they just turned their exhibit sideways, so it was confusing.
Yeah. They have a variance request for ten of the lots on there to be less than sixty feet wide. So that's another thing we're going to be talking to them about on Friday.
We noticed on the map, there used to be a plan for fairly large development west of where forty three is up there, south of the city road. What, has that gone away?
We've talked to residents in that area sort of off and on, but nothing formal has come in as far as application.
I wonder if there was a formal application for single family homes and multifamily development in there?
Yeah, there was a pre-application.
The middle school?
No.
Over by Tim and Road and.
Like all the way out of town.
Oh, out of town, okay.
Yeah.
So that's gone away?
For now, it's gone quiet. Yeah.
And then what, can anybody speak to what the current phasing is at minute management? What are they putting in first?
They are working first phase on the Minute Mart and the hotel.
The what?
The the convenience store, the Minute Mart, and then the hotel phase.
See, they've been making good headway up there. Do you anticipate they're going to work right through the winter?
That seems to be the plan. We have issued them a foundation permit for the the convenience store. And I think full.
Going to be issuing.
Well, they got to come pick it up, I guess.
Yeah, they still have to give us plans, but.
Oh, they haven't given us plans.
They haven't given us the final plans.
Okay, anyway, we're close to issuing the foundation permit. And then they and they have a full approval for the hotel, correct?
Yes.
And that includes gas pumps?
Yep.
At the minute.
Yeah, the gas pump, they actually got permitted for that a year ago, just because it's less complicated. For us, the building part. I'm I'm sure everything else is complicated.
Part's probably complicated.
Yeah, yeah.
So the second phase would be the commercial.
The commercial space, correct. Yep.
As far as you know, they're still doing the, they're trying to talk about putting two different fast foods in. Is that still their their thoughts on that?
As far as we know, we haven't heard anything different.
Two. And I either a dozen, maybe retail stores or something like that.
Great.
Well, thanks for the report. We appreciate it. Any other questions about the report? Commissioners here?
No, thank you.
All right. Thanks again. Commissioner Nutbrock, any comments? We're moving into one ten. Commissioner Hill, any comments, thoughts?
No, I think just by my comments, anxious to see the big picture, recognizing it's a moving target to some level because the deeper you get into it, the more. But getting a, kind of getting a sense of the big picture would be, for me, helpful to see what what lies ahead. So appreciate your efforts and look forward to that.
What do you think, question on that follow-up question, what do you think would be most helpful? We could maybe do a flow chart kind of showing what some of the major comp plan elements were and the, you know, the pieces below that, steps below the each of those. Or, I mean, we're going to, we're going to do a work plan, right? The work plan will probably basically be a table kind of listing out the tasks and some of the subtasks within them. But I just want to make sure that we're, at the end of the day, that we're making sense to you. So I don't know if you have a preferred format that speaks to your heart.
My my preferred format, at least for me initially, is to keep it high level, not get into the minutia. This today, you know, Alex went through a lot of stuff there. That's all good, but that's not something you want to present to council. You got to, you got to pick out two or three things in there and put them in in the number fourteen print, you know, and say, these are, you know, they're not going to be interested in getting into the minutia. If they do, you have the answers. But to me also, looking at this thing at a high level, I'd much rather see it at some big bullet points. You know, here are the key things moving forward. And I know that for, as a council member, thus, those kind of things are what I appreciated too is somebody comes in with a ten-page document and says, well, let me go through this with you. That's tough. But if you have a two-page chart that says, here are all the key things that we're going to be looking at, you know, and these are the key items within that that we think we're probably going to, that are, these are, these are required by this, by the state and we're going to incorporate, there's a large number of those. And then here's others that we're going to be looking at to see how how applicable those are to the center. And we may want to get your input on what direction you want us to do. Do you want us to delve in there a little bit more, you know? But again, high level, I'd much rather have someone say, well, that's great, but can you give us, can you tell us a little bit more? Rather than giving us too much. That's my, that's my two cents.
And I, I guess I'd like to see some timing with that too. What is, when does this task need to be completed to support any subsequent downstream tasks? Just to make sure we're, we're making progress.
Okay, well, aim for brevity and timing.
And just to clarify, this was what the way that we were going to tackle the comprehensive plan as like a, like a team and just understanding like what we're doing, what's next, what's done. Is that, is that what? Well, I have a, well, actually, since since we went off on a tangent and apologies from cutting you off from your comment. But let me ask this, internal to you guys at WSP, what does it look like internally? I'm sure there's like quite a bit of funds that are put into project management. Is there, is there some kind of output that we can see everything? You know, and 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 maybe like even like the things as they get checked off. And don't give me any proprietary, but like, hey, we use ClickUp or whatever, or Asana, but.
Well, I guess I'm not quite sure what your question is, but are you asking about just sort of like project tracking and?
Yeah, like, like what you guys use internally, like if there's like a, like a reduced like export of that that could be given to us, that, and I think it does two things. One, it gives us like the ability to have brev- One, it gives us like the ability to have brevity or not. And then the second thing is you're not recreating, you're not reinventing things just for our sake, but we're just seeing it kind of as it happens.
I mean, we commonly use Microsoft Project to put together project schedules. And, you know, that can then lay out the tasks and you can roll up the tasks to different levels and you can kind of see how the tasks interrelate to each other. That was one of the reasons why I wanted to ask what speaks to you because that ends up being a Gantt chart. But for some people, that just ends up being-
It gets a little over, but though, but sure, Nutbrock would love it. He has music to his ears. Well, maybe we'll, maybe we'll figure it out, but-
You can roll those up to a higher level. And I think, you know, Steve Chairman's point is, don't, don't invent something just for this if you already got a project plan that can be summarized.
Did you guys feel that the priority list from the code was, was a fairly readable document? Do you know? It was just an Excel, but that you might be able to output to, to Excel or something. Actually, I know you can, but I don't know how crazy it gets. Anyway, I'm sure we could discuss that more.
We'll, we'll play around with it a little bit and see if we can't come back with something that you can look at in a couple pages and sort of represent the major pieces of it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think our, our planning will definitely have to be on, on par to, to really stay, to not fall behind, I guess, to say. Thank you, guys, as always.
Commissioner Smith?
I was pretty fortunate tonight to well receive the memorandum and the way that it lays out the tasks, what we've got to look at. It's a lot, but it seems to be there summarized and then listed in long form. And that, that was an effective way for me without doing anything else. So thanks.
And I'll just throw my comment in there. I, I always save myself for last, but I, I'd like to start off by thinking all of you guys as usual. But welcome, Alex, to your first in-person. I know, I know, I, I doxed you on one of the, the WebEx. And not doxed you, but I was like, hey, who's that? There's someone in our meeting. You have to say something.
Wasn't a public citizen. Sorry.
You got our hopes up, but we forgive you. But, but definitely welcome and, and thanks for walking us through that. We love having you here. And, and thanks to all of you guys, you and Jess, Brian, Ethan, all, all you guys, we'd be lost without you. So appreciate everything. That's, that's my comment.
Can I go back?
Yes.
When is the parking plan going to city council?
Oh, the parking code? The 26th. Yeah.
We should go and root, root for our plan. All right, well, as far, just moving on here and trying to keep us to the schedule. As far as regular agendas and work sessions, that's to come. Some major work sessions probably. And if you guys are okay with that, you know, that text before these meetings, just instead of asking everyone their schedule at this meeting where things change on a daily basis, I'll just keep going with that if you guys are fine with it. And so with that, we are done with our agenda. If there are no objections, I will adjourn our meeting. Going once. All right. Here are no objections at this.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, guys.